Good morning. It is August 23, 2022, 10:00 a.m. We'll call to order a meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
To move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Morgan.
Aye.
Hennessy. Aye. Basil. Aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. If you know one, step forward to the table. We'll close with public comment number one. And move on to consideration of proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day, which is August 31st. Supervisor, Heather, speaking with the start.
Sure. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized globally on August 31st to raise awareness about the risk of overdosing, honor the special someone whose life has been lost from overdosing, and acknowledge the grief felt by families, friends, and communities around the world. And whereas, overdose awareness day aims to publicly challenge the stigma associated with substance abuse disorders and overdosing.
And whereas overdose claims lies in more than 469 Iowa residents in 2021, as well as countless others will be affected forever. And whereas every person's life is valuable and every overdose death is preventable, it is imperative to recognize overdose as a social issue which impacts victims, their families, friends, and communities.
And? Whereas Story County is calling on all communities, the state, the country, and the country to support overdose prevention policies and projects, and to work together to end the stigma and silence surrounding substance use and overdose. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2022, International Overdose Awareness Day.
Proclamation.
Second.
Seconded. Hennessy. Aye. Morgan.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. We're gonna go ahead and get a picture real quick. Okay. Oh, I always move that one. Are we centered?
I'll come a little bit this way. There you go. All right. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. And then could you want to talk briefly about the head?
Yeah.
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 Go ahead.
Yeah.
And if you could just state your name and the organization that you're here with.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Claudia Schmuggi. I'm a prevention specialist at Community and Family Resources in Ames. And this Sunday, August 28th, 2022, we are having the Overdose Awareness Day event. So the actual day is the 31st, but we're gonna be like celebrating it on the 28th at Ban Shell Park from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And we're gonna have speakers from the community. We're also going to have popcorn as like food to dark people. But we're also going to have a Narcan administration training. So everyone there will learn how to administer Narcan, and they'll also get a free certificate to get free Narcan at a pharmacy. We'll also be playing a movie that shows people's experiences with overdose, families talking about it. Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. We're also going to have free t-shirts as well for the first, I think, 100 people that will be there. And we're also going to have a memorial for people that have passed away in Story County that will be interactive, so people can participate in that. So, yeah, we hope that people will come.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming and talking and being here for the proclamation. And I think it's such an important event for everybody to attend. We're not just talking about, you know, we're talking about everybody in your family, in your life that can be affected. And so the more people that go and get this training for Narcan, the better, because it can be a grandchild that gets into grandparents' medication. It can be, it can be anybody. It can be someone who went to the dentist one time and got prescribed something, and it changed their life. So the more people that talk about it and come to these events, the better. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we stop over here? Yeah.
Yeah.
So actually, if I could just print on the sign sheet.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Write names. We have no agency reports. Consideration of minutes from August 16, 2022.
I would move to approval of August 16th minutes.
Second. Moved and seconded. Morgan.
Aye.
Hennessy. Aye. Basil. Aye. Personnel actions.
I would move to approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hennessy. Aye. Morgan. Basil. Aye. Consent agenda. I'd like to pull number eight. Anything else being pulled some consent?
No, but I agree with one there.
Okay.
Question.
All right, so entertain the motion to approve consent. Without, do we do ahead, go ahead and do number eight first?
No, through the motion as approved without.
Okay. Without item number eight.
I would move approval of consent agenda, except for item eight.
Second. Moved and seconded. Morgan. Aye. Aye. Basil. Aye.
And I pulled item number eight. I had a question I wanted to ask with some monitoring, and I see that she's walked in. So. Hi Lisa, so I know this is the sheriff's request. The pleaded vehicles. And in their notation, they said that they would be about almost 14,000 over budget in the rural fund. So just my understanding, since I talked with you earlier to make sure I am clear on this, that we're out there on this, is that to, while it's over budgeted in the rural fund, you'll pull fund funding from the carryover from the lost fund to pay for this, of which we have about $312,000. Is that correct?
That, that would be correct, yes.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to make sure where we were, where we were pulling that money from.
That's where it's at.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, Emily.
That's the only question that I have. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Then I make the motion that we approve number eight on the consent agenda.
Seventh. Moved and seconded. Hennessy. Aye. Morgan. Aye. Basil. Aye.
Thanks for getting that information. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if we see if they went to that. I like to make sure where the money's coming from.
Moving on to public hearing, we have no public hearing items. Additional items, departmental reports. We've got conservation, quarterly report. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Good to have you here actually in person today.
Yeah.
I feel like all the rest of them have been on Zoom.
We've done a lot of that.
Yeah.
Very good. Um, you all have seen the report that I submitted. Couple things that I'll, I'll call out from that. I guess my intention is not necessarily to go through it all. You've seen it. If you have any questions, let me know. But one of the things I think is worthy of talking about right now is some water quality components. And you see in the report that we have had a fish die off at McFarland Lake, which is, you know, very unfortunate, but we had the weather conditions and had algae growth, some other aquatic vegetation growth that has limited daylight getting into the water.
So is it the one, I think it had high heat before. Is it the long, the long term that we had that that's impacted?
Yeah, it's, it's a combination of things. It's, it's a combination of that vegetation and algae growth, a combination of really very little rainfall, and then the warm temperatures and even the cool temperatures at night add to that. So, yeah, you know, those are the ingredients, and you add those up, and you end up with what we have. We, the lake also is very sheltered, and we don't get a lot of wind action. If you get wind action, you get a little bit more oxygen that, that gets distributed into the water. So we don't have a lot of that as well. And so all of those added up to what we are experiencing right now.
Not having any E coli issues?
We haven't been testing McFarland for E coli. We test the waters that, that we have swimming at. But, but we haven't tested at McFarland.
I just wanted to say, saw the article about Spirit Lake this morning.
What's that?
Spirit Lake. There was an article this morning about Spirit Lake having off the charts E coli.
Oh. Some kind of the same, same factors that led to the situation we have at McFarland will also lead to high E coli oftentimes, because you're not having that recycling. You know, it's been some time since we've had measurable rainfall. You get water in, you get water out, it kind of recharges the lake. We just haven't had that for any lake, that is. So, so we're, we are experiencing some problems. We've had, we do have some high E coli at Hickory Grove Lake. We've got some high E coli at Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor as well. And so, you know, it's kind of, it's some, it's a factor of the time of year and the lack of rainfall. And the presence of, at Hickory Grove, we know that its significant contributor to it is geese. And so we know that, that, you know, we have a pretty good goose population there. I expect that the Conservation Board, I know that the Conservation Board will consider a controlled hunt this fall and winter for geese at Hickory Grove. We've done that in the past, have done it for years. And so I expect that they'll consider that again this year. But we know, we know at Hickory anyway, that the geese are a problem there. We do do a, we do take efforts to try to keep them away from the beach area. That's where we do the E coli testing at the beach. We are taking efforts to try to keep them away from the beach and doing that for some time as well, but.
But once the levels are high in the water, matter, right?
Then what?
Once the levels are high in the lake itself, excuse me, whether the geese are at the beach or not.
Yeah, it's hard to combat that. Yeah. 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 And I think our efforts have been somewhat successful at the beach, even though we do have some high E coli there. We don't, we don't have the normal hangout spots at the beach that we have had in the past.
Okay.
So I think we're seeing some success there, but we still have the high, high bacteria. Um, speaking of water quality, then, as you see in the report, what we've been doing, great work this summer with the Volunteer Water Quality Monitoring Network. We've had, in fact, we even had waiting lists this summer with, with volunteers wanting to get involved with that. So we've been, you know, we've been blessed in that regard. We've got a lot of folks out there that are really concerned about, aware of, and concerned about the quality of our waters. So we're getting some, we're getting some good help with that. We've also, this year, we've had some communication with Hamilton County, and, and they are interested in doing a little bit of the sampling themselves. And so we've kind of assisted them in developing that network there. So I think they've got a small core of volunteers now that are, that are monitoring Hamilton.
Do you have them on Iowa Bay and the South Lawn?
We do. Those are part of the monthly sampling that Prairie Rivers of Iowa is doing. And those, that sampling gets submitted for lab analysis. So. So, yeah, the, that volunteer, I should say not the, not specifically the volunteer, but the sampling protocol, if you will, in the county is comprised of, and thanks Linda for that cue, but it is comprised of not just the volunteers, but then a, a lab component, and then what we call snapshots. So the lab component, I think there's 15 sites in the county that are being monitored by staff at Prairie Rivers. And and so those tests are done, or those grab samples are taken on a regular basis, I think on a monthly basis, and submitted to the city for, for analysis. And also we have the snapshot analysis, which is kind of a, a combination of volunteers and on staff that on a specific day at a specific time will go out and, and, and get kind of a all simultaneous samples that then get analyzed. And so coordinate a few of those, and, and Prairie Rivers coordinates those. So so we continue to have, you know, good partnerships with the, with the city of Ames and several other of our cities that are involved in that monitoring program. So along the, along the lines of water, wastewater side, you saw in the report that we're struggling to find a solution to the wastewater Hickory Grove. We think we have another route that has some potential, that that's what we're exploring right now. But unfortunately, we're going to plan, I don't know what plan number this is. It's far from A, far from B. It's, it's been some time, but at any rate, we went to the next option and trying to find a route that we can address Hickory Grove and, and get it addressed, you know, as soon as we can. But this route will likely involve some more funding, because it's a longer route. However, it's a higher constructability, if you will. It's a little easier, flatter grade, not as many boorings. You know, there's no creek crossings or stream crossings. So we can get this other route. It's one mile longer. However, it's, it's, it's easier to construct. So we don't know where the, we're investigating engineering for it now. Don't know where the cost opinion is going to come in, but reasonably, I think it's reasonable to expect it will come in at more than 500, a little over 500,000 that we have dedicated for it in the ARPA, in ARPA funding. Any questions on water?
I would like that you pointed out that we're partnering with the city of Ames in there, whereas Sarah, our water coordinator, is doing a lot of work with the landowners and getting some monies together for the practices. We're running some of that through the city of Ames, as well as running some of the water quality testing through the city. So I think that's been just a really, really good city-county partnership.
Yeah, it is. And they've, they've been tremendous partners on this. They really have been. In fact, as we speak, there's a pre-construction meeting for the edge of field practice contract happening in Ames right now. So, so they're moving forward with that.
Do you recall how many saturated buffers and how many bio reactors that is?
Cali, I should know off the top of my head, but I don't. It is in the twenties.
Yes.
Combination of the two is in the low twenties.
Mostly saturated buffer.
Yes.
Most economical. And easy for the landowner to maintain. So.
Yeah.
I'm glad we were able to get some of those.
What's that?
I'm glad we were able to get so many saturated buffers in the sites.
Yes.
Bioreactors, you know, money faster.
Yeah. So we're working on next year's sites right now. Preliminary survey has been done on those sites. Site surveys have been done. We are struggling, if you will, right now to find some engineering support to do those sites. So we're, we're continuing to work on that, if you will. But after preliminary, after preliminary site survey, that really tells you is, is the site a candidate for this practice, either a buffer or a bioreactor, saturated buffer or bioreactor? If it's a candidate, then the site goes into engineering queue. And then, and then civil engineers will take a look at the, at the elevations and, and et cetera, and really determine, design what the system needs to look like. These are very simple, but it still takes some engineering support.
So the engineer that did the initial sites is not available to do that?
It's a different level. It's a different level of analysis.
Oh.
And so it's the, kind of the site survey is going out and getting some data. And then the engineering level of it is then analyzing that data, determining what, what level of design it needs.
So which engineer? So the engineering, the engineer that did the 20 that exists now?
That's already been done.
Right. It's, it's that engineer or engineering company not available?
Yeah, no, we don't think that they're going to be available. So we're, we're trying to, hoping that some of our partners can build some capacity for engineering. And so that, that's our hope. So I think some, some of those partners that we're working with are, are going through that process now, determining if they're going to be able to do that. So if, if that's the case, then, then makes it much, much easier for us to get things through the process in, into the construction queue.
The freshman just stated with the Polk County Program, just their engineers, is that how they got them?
Well, JEO, there's a JEO engineering firm did the, did the engineering on those. And, and so yeah, that was a relationship that Polk County had with JEO, and so they assisted with that. So we're, we're thankful for that. We're encouraged that we've got another, probably about the same number of sites. If we can satisfy the engineering need, we've probably got about the same number of sites going in next year.
Right.
So.
This is so exciting.
Ideally, we'd like to, you know, increase that number. But it's still, it's still a fabulous number, considering, if you may recall, what I mentioned when we started this project was that the first year Polk County did this, they ended up installing more practices than were installed, or, or at least a comparable amount, if not more, practices that were installed in the whole state. So the number we're at is, is very respectable. It's a good number.
You know what they say, if you have a volunteer nutrient reduction strategy, you need a bunch of volunteers.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's obviously what we're doing with this, and Sarah's done a great job of finding volunteers willing to help practices on them.
Right.
And that word, that word will spread.
Yeah.
And we'll have some opportunities to spread that word too.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, agreed. Agreed.
Obviously, people are paying attention. You've got a waiting list.
What's that?
Obviously, people are paying attention if you've got a waiting list for volunteers.
For the monitoring.
Yeah.
Yeah, without a doubt. Okay. Any other questions that you have on the report? Those are kind of the, some of the highlights I wanted to hit. You'll notice that we've completed a number of park improvement projects. We have, I'll say, system-wide, we have been having significant delays with contractors and supply chain, et cetera, that have caused some of these to go on. We're thankful that, that everything that has been completed now, we've got a couple other lingering things. I think I mentioned in here some signage installation, et cetera, that, that have been lingering as well. We're hoping to get that wrapped up here as, as soon as we can. But in general, it's, these projects have taken a while to come to fruition. But once they have, I don't know if you've been to Peterson Park to see the improvements, but we get a lot of good, very positive feedback on the improvements that have been made there.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's fabulous. We were able to get some stream bank stabilization completed. The camping area at Dakin's Lake that we made some nice improvements at, so. One, and I'll note that, that with these improvements, you know, we, we see, and this is anecdotal, but we see so many, you know, families out enjoying these facilities. And, you know, it's, it's just encouraging to see that. So again, our motto is, is really, the more improvements we can make, then the more, you know, good community use that happens, and maybe some less of the fringe use that, that happens in some facilities, so.
The bio assessment at Jeanette.
What's that?
Bio assessment at Jeanette.
Yeah, we just completed be the second, this is the second one we've done. We completed one on Grant Creek last year, a bio assessment that we contract with the University of Iowa lab for. And it's pretty thorough. So they'll go through and, and do the assessment on, on the, this time we did it on West Indian Creek at Jeanette Wildlife Area, so south Nevada on S14. Last year, we did Grant Creek at the same location. This year, West Indian. And so we'll look at, you know, several different chem, water chemistry levels. Some of the same ones are in the volunteer program, but we'll get into a little more depth in, in this one. We look at fish populations, invertebrate populations, plant communities. It's pretty, pretty robust assessment. So very happy to be able to do that.
That's the reason I was asking. We're, we're doing pretty well on half of the county right now in terms of having watershed management stories. But we have not done anything on, on West Indian Creek. And I just wondered if that's the, once we get headwaters WMA really going and getting our, getting our assessment done and getting our action plan, what do you think about any increase?
I think it's a natural progression. I think that, you know, that most of our water resources in the county are associated with the Skunk River. So it makes sense that we focus on that. And, and once we, once we get kind of this headwaters WMA assessment done and, and get some, get our feet on the ground with that, and we've already got longstanding efforts with Iowa, that, yeah, I, I do think it's a natural progression then to go to work east in the county and hit our next major water resources, which are Indian Creek, combination of east and, and west. And then they join in the south part of the county, just into Indian Creek. So, yeah, I think that's very worthy of.
The majority of the county.
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't have the, I can't tell you a percentage off the top of my head, but it's a significant portion of the county that's covered by those, those, those water sheds.
In fact, but I also want to really, I would like to mention the strategic planning retreat that you had the other day. Yes, Brandon's led it, and it was excellent. And I just reviewed the draft report. Really glad to see the emphasis on climate change and environment. And there's really good connection between conservation, getting people into our parks and our natural areas, and their, their understanding and commitment to working on environmental issues. So I, and it, and it was your strategy, and I just loved that.
Yeah.
It was a, you know, Nancy did, and you did a good job of putting all that input together, your staff, your board members did an excellent job of bringing up the issues for the strategic plans. But forward seeing that get further developed in terms of like what year we're gonna do what.
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a, it was very, it was a good process and good draft document.
Good.
Good.
Thank you. Well, thank you. The, the, you know, the staff and board are always very, very excited to be able to generate. very excited to be able to generate strategic plans and, and to see where where their individual piece of the pie fits into the whole and et cetera, and kind of do some, do some bigger visioning for the organization. And so Linda attended the joint board and staff visioning exercise or strategic planning exercise that Nancy facilitated. And so that was, was very well received. This next strategic plan that we have that we're developing right now will be considered by the Conservation Board their September meeting. Historic, I guess I should say, historically strategic plans have, have taken kind of a siloed approach to program offerings of conservation. So we'll have one section on environmental education, one section on, you know, natural resources. One section on recreation, et cetera. This one takes a little different approach and considers those pillars, if you will. The strategic directions outlined or initiatives outlined in this one don't follow those silos. But, yeah, they, they're represented, those, those pillars are represented in each silo, if you will. And so it's, it's nice, in addition to climate change and environmental health being strategic directions, you'll see efforts throughout on diversity, equity, and inclusion in, in both strategic directions that are called out in this draft plan. So you see them there as well, so. So, and, and that, I think, came across very strong at that work session too. And so it's, it's been encouraging. We've been doing some continued, some, some DEI training and throughout the department. And people are recognizing the, the importance and the, their roles in that. And so that's encouraging to see. Yeah, we're, we're encouraged to see the intersections here with the efforts that we've been doing and the effort that that Alyssa is getting started here at the county. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm glad to see you're getting connected with the schools again.
Yes, yes, we just, yesterday finished teacher meetings, or all the elementary schools. So it's always pretty, pretty hectic to get through all of those teacher meetings and get everything for the year scheduled. That's a lot of work.
And I know someone who went through your Iowa Master Naturals program. She loved it.
Oh, very good.
Loved it.
Oh, fantastic. Fantastic. Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Appreciate your work and your work.
Thanks.
We have no other reports and you have community agenda items? Okay, now it's time for public comment number two. Comments when the public on the items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of public reading stop, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. No one will post public comment number two and move to liaison assignments committee meeting, updates, and announcements from supervisors.
Sure, I guess first I just want to comment is last Friday I attended the cryptocurrency presentation at the Sheriff's Office. And I don't know, it looked like it's my brain. It's it was very interesting. The presenter was very good on it. To me, it just looked like a lot of time in front of a computer to try to make money. It's just like yawns, I'm just ready, fine, I'm just regular bills and change in my local bank and try to figure out that. But it's just scary to think of that it's out there in some respects and some of the predatory things that can occur and really the safety things you need to have in place, in place with it. But it was certainly interesting. I'd almost go through it again because there was so much information to try to take in. You know, you just can't write all the information down. But then after the rest of my schedule, I have the meeting this afternoon, so I'll be out this afternoon. And then the rest of the week I'll be at the ISAC conference, which I think I will be there as well. Just to let you know that I will be on a panel Friday morning at the ISAC conference at AVAM. It's their legislative panel, but they asked me to be on as a former legislator for the county supervisor. So that'll be a really, really funny on Friday. And then I'll be back in on Monday, then I'll be out Monday afternoon for a meeting, and then I've got my meeting that evening.
Some meetings this afternoon, and then the Iowa State Association of Counties, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I meant to just mention, oh, last week I attended some very interesting trainings called MAPS-G. It's basically the Public Safety Communication Network we have going in Story County. And it's a, it's cooperative, like Storycom is, it's really a lot, you know, Iowa State, Story County, and City of Ames. And now I know a lot more about MAPS-G than I did before, but I still, there is a lot to know. When I asked Nick Lenny a question, kind of aside, I didn't want to ask him, he said, I don't know, why don't you ask the group, why don't you ask the facilitator? And I did, and it was most complex, everybody's kind of shaking their head. It's like, that's so complex. But, but I kind of felt good that not everybody understands all of it, but people understand enough of it, and we have a really good collaboration to make sure we have good public safety communication system in this county. So that was, that was cool. The thing I'm going to miss Saturday, which I hate to say, but I just wanted to point out because the Iowa Women's Hall of Fame is inducting some Story County residents or former Story County residents and with connections to Story County. At first, Mary Richards, our former county attorney, who was the first head of the County Attorneys Association for Iowa, looks female. And really has been a role model and metric to a lot of women in the criminal justice system. She then went on to be president of the Women's Ballers Association of Story County. I was very fortunate to work with her in both capacities there. And I'm going to see her today because we're going to celebrate today because I can't get there Saturday because I have another commitment. The other person, and I wanted to mention, well, two other people, Laura Shipper. Lori, a long time, was, was the head of the Story County Access. I mean, she studied before, it was called ACCESS, when in the domestic violence field. And then she was the executive director for a very long term Iowa Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Lori has so many credentials and so many accomplishments, turning, she has been just, you know, stellar in helping people understand the dynamics of domestic violence. I was very pleased to work with her when I was operations director and served better as education programs. She was on the, on the work group that I was on and several other people to get those going. And we owe a lot of thanks to Lori. Those two people I know personally, I did not know Mary Swann personally, but she was the poet laureate of Iowa from 2009 to 2019. I think connections with University of Iowa and Iowa State University, and to see her being, you know, inducted into Women's Hall of Fame is, is excellent as well, so. If anybody can go to that, do. I, I really looked into it. I really wanted to be there. But it just reminds me of how many women leaders that we have had in Story County and in Iowa. Just wanted to take a couple.
Thank you.
That's, I'm not sure what I'm doing yet Monday. Oh, I've got a couple meetings, but, yeah. I'll be busy Monday too. So, yeah, looking forward to the ISAC. Yeah, to your presentation.
I have an interview with KJ O I tomorrow morning at seven. And then, and I'll be at the conference. Also, I'm going to step away for a little bit on Thursday for the executive board meeting. Thursday, but I'll be back Wednesday evening. I have a CCJ board meeting. And Thursday night there is the ISAC is partnering with the ICUP, so there's an ICUP scheme. I'm really excited because I'm going to be hanging out with the the National Association of Counties' first VP at the game, which will be really cool because we both serve on the Women of NICO committee together. Saturday, there's the induction of the Women's Hall of Fame. Sunday is the overdose awareness event again at three o'clock at the Band Shell in Ames. Monday, I have a meeting. All right, anything else? Second, moved in seconded, ten, working, all right, faithful, I return. Thank you.